And I believe that means we're ready to go. I hereby call this meeting of the Village Council, the Village of Glendale, to order, and will begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
The United States of America And to the Republic
For which it stands
One nation Under God
Under God
Indivisible
With liberty Justice For all
As I always do, I will ask everyone to mute unless you are speaking and keep background noises to a minimum. This is the, what would have been the April meeting of the Village Council would have been held on next Monday, but because of the holiday, we decided to pull it back into March. And so this is, but this is the regular April meeting of the Village Council. We, it is a virtual meeting, and we have fulfilled all requirements under Ohio law to hold the meeting in this manner. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that you call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum.
Mr. Bessel?
Here.
Mr. Hoeller?
Here.
Ms. Duke?
Here.
Ms. Mosenko?
Here.
Mr. Baseman?
Here.
And Mr. Kreidler's absent.
That is correct, and I believe we have a quorum. Madam Clerk, can you confirm that?
I confirm the presence of a quorum.
Okay, and we have an agenda, and the agenda has been circulated. There was one set of changes necessary to correct the numbering of the ordinances. That new agenda has been circulated, and there have been no further changes suggested to it. So I will assume that agenda is satisfactory. And I will say too that the ordinances themselves that were circulated, some of them, they may not have been renumbered, but they will be renumbered according to the numbers in the agenda. And I will also, as we go along, give the correct numbers. So with that, first of all, I would like to welcome Mr. Hoeller back from his surgery. He and I talked earlier today, and he's feeling hale and hearty, ready to go. And as has been pointed out, Mr. Kreidler is unable to make us, make it for this meeting. He is traveling, and he is in some area that is even beyond the far-flung reaches of Zoom. So with that, I'm going to note for, in the beginning, that this is truly a watershed year for the village because of the retirement, retirements of a number of long-term employees. And at the end of the meeting, we have one who is having his, two actually, who are having their last day, last meeting in their current positions of administrator and police chief. And we will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to say farewell to our administrator. The police chief has suggested that perhaps because of the length of the agenda and the need to focus on our administrator, he would be content to wait until next to May, and he will come back for that meeting even though he, that would be past his retirement date. So with that, I'm going to note too that when that day comes, when that happy day comes, we can all meet together. I'm going to put together a true celebration and a true chance to say hail and farewell to Mr. Cordis, Chief Warman, and Phyllis DePeel, who served the village for such a long time and have all retired within the last, either announced retirement or retired within the last couple of months. At first, I would be tempted to say, was it something I said? But they have assured me that, no, it's not my personal, nothing personal, that they felt the time was, was ready for them. So with that, I'm going to turn to the minutes of the March 1st meeting, and these minutes have been circulated and amended. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppo, any opposed? Motion carried. We now turn to the public comment portion of our agenda, which is going to be rather lengthy. And we have a number of people who have indicated an interest in speaking. We have tried to devote, divide them, sort them out by the subject that we believe they want to speak about or that they have indicated they want to speak about. We may be wrong on some of that, but we'll, you'll get your chance to have your say. However, one person did not really indicate a subject, and so we will let him lead off the discussion. That would be Mr. Kevin Parrish. So Mr. Parrish, if you're, David, can you promote Mr. Parrish, and we'll hear from him?
He is very, yep, coming in now.
Am I, am I on? Hello?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. It saddens me to see that at the Glendale Planning and Historic Preservation Commission meeting that just passed, that they didn't, were not more conscious of time. You had one person do a presentation of 30 minutes, which was on the driveway setback, which, that presentation was presented in February meeting also. Then you had Denny, Mark Hutton, and Janet Davis do a 25-minute presentation when you knew before the meeting started that there would be public comments. You left nine minutes for that. That shows just the type of racist atmosphere that we're dealing with in this village of Glendale. Now, I know Councilwoman Duke tried to address that, and you tried to crucify her just addressing the issue of racism here. Well, the pandemic has nothing on us compared to that. Now, earlier in this month, I addressed the issue of the water issue once again. It was acknowledged in a meeting that, by my, by Mr. Bessel, that you do acknowledge the contamination of Summit Field, the water problems, which I warned you about three years ago, in 2018, and yet you have done nothing there, and it is a swamp land for mosquitoes breeding. Matter of fact, a Petri dish for that. But we see that you have a lack of concern about the public health issues that are affecting residents here, and you consistently disregard the water issues. You still lie to them about what's actually going on, but if people go up near 75, we will see that all of this is related to Glendale. The people on Sharon Road, they have no doubt that the water issues that they experience is a direct result of neglect from this village administration. So in response to my comments earlier this month, you put up something about the history of the sanitary sewer system in the Village of Glendale. What you said was put up in 1920. Well, it only had a 50-year life expectancy, and in 1970, they would have exhausted that 50-year. Now, in the case of Parrish versus Village of Glendale of 2018, under our discovery motion, we asked for the records of maintenance for the sanitary sewer system along Washington area. The Village of Glendale, for the record, did not provide, could not provide the last 40 years of maintenance that had occurred or had not occurred on this system. So the issues that people are experiencing now are intentional neglect, or just ignorance, or just don't know what to do. But the EPA has a long record of documents that I have accumulated that say that you were well aware of the inadequacies that we have with the wastewater treatment plant. It's inadequacies in being able to process the amount of water that's needed to provide safe water to residents. And now we have contaminations in our parks that you have not addressed. And yet, you're thinking about converting Summit Park into a residential area because you have to dig it up to address the issues of, from Sharon Road to Van Ness is all blocked and has been blocked for ages. The residency here in the Village of Glendale, it takes courage to stand up and talk out about the injustices that are going, that are happening here. I commend the heroes of the white residents that provided an opportunity for my black relatives to get to freedom, put their lives on the line. Well, it seems like the new generation of white residents are embarrassed about that fact, and they are intentionally destroying the national historic relics that exist here, intentionally filling in the underground tunnels and destroying national historic relics.
You have about 30 seconds.
And yet, you're so time-conscious about black residents when they speak, but you had no restraints on the last meeting. It's pitiful. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn to residents who have asked to speak about either matters, matters before the Glendale Community Improvement Corporation or development in general. And if I have you miscategorize, just feel free to let me know that, and then speak about whatever you intend to speak about. So I'll begin with Resident Ron Vischer. David, can you bring, promote him?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can?
Okay. First, first of all, I want to speak about the ordinance that's in front of the village, which is renaming the park board. David, can you put my slides up on the screen? Dave?
One second, yes, one second.
Okay, my, my request concerning this ordinance is that, that we have three reads before it's passed or voted upon. And the reason that I'm requesting that was when I was at the park board meeting, virtually, and the ordinance was voted on in the park board itself. The question was asked at that meeting whether council should require three reads to pass it, and the answer to that was no. In that this is a change in the law, I believe the village residents and also the council members would like some additional information before voting on it. And I think three reads is the best way to make sure that additional information is, is gathered. And so I've included the little diagram above to illustrate that while the park board and the urban forestry board are the same in many ways, we may want to focus our attention on how they're different. Next slide, please. First of all, the, is, is the current law, and I note that the current law does constitute, says the park board constitutes an urban forestry board, so this is not a new idea. It's already recognized in our laws. And so the question is, well, what is the benefit in changing the law to make the park board named the urban forestry board? Well, let's look at an outline of what the new law says, and that's on the next slide. It includes the base shall manage and administer all property for park purposes. That's where the two laws overlap, the old one and the new one. But it includes some new responsibilities that are established in programs and fundraising that are not limited to urban forestry. I think that's one reason that we would want to have three reads of it is to understand what fundraising, not limited to the things that are generally considered urban forestry, would really mean. I applaud the park board. I know that the village needs to raise funds, but I, I'm surprised that they'd be interested in fundraising in areas outside of their direct responsibility. Let's talk on the next slide. Let's note that it's not, the new responsibilities are not limited to forestry, and I believe they should be. I think that's what the park board or the new name, Urban Forestry Board, is about, and its responsibility should be limited to those areas of forestry and park management that, that I think everybody agrees that it ought to be doing. Unfortunately, when you change laws, sometimes those law changes have unanticipated consequences. And I was concerned about how the new ordinance interacts with our state code. So let's talk now about how it interacts with the Glendale Planning and Heritage Preservation Commission. And maybe at a later date, we can talk about how it would interact with the state park board code itself, the Ohio State Code. Next slide, please. I noted when I read the Glendale Ordinance 3245 that establishes the Glendale Planning and Heritage Preservation Commission, that it had a citation of the statutory reference in Ohio Code 713.01. And what was interesting about that code is that it had different statements depending upon whether the municipality in question has a park board or not. And that is that the number of, of planning commission members would be different if you have a park board than if you don't have a park board. And so if we're going to replace park board with urban forestry board, do we have a park board any longer or not? I'm, I'm not an attorney, and I don't claim to be, but I would like to understand a little bit better the implications of a law. We do cite, cite this state law in the ordinance that establishes our very valuable Glendale Planning and Heritage Preservation Committee, and would no longer be following the intent of that citation if we change having a park board or not, because we simply have more commissioners than the five that a city would have that only, if it does not have a park board. Next slide, please.
You have about 30 seconds.
As I said, next slide, please. So I looked at Wyoming as an example. They have no park board, and they have a planning commission of five members. If we have no park board, does that mean we have a planning commission of five members? Wyoming seems to be following the state code. And why wouldn't we? Next slide. So the key question is, what is the material significance in the authority of changing our park board name to Urban Forestry Board, which is in the best interests of the village? Is there going to be an impact?
The time has expired.
On the HBC, is there going to be impact on the code relative to park board code? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next, Jenny Kilgore is asked to speak. Can you part, can you promote her, David?
She has been promoted. Give her just a second.
I just wanted to attend the meeting. Thank you very much.
Next, Cindy Taylor.
I am attending the meeting and wanting to speak to support Tony Brock and his wanting to bring tennis and paddle tennis courts to the athletic field, or a lot of people call it the Summit Park Field. I think it would be a great program to have up there, to have the tennis courts going and pickleball. And I think it would be, it was very impressive when we had Arthur Ashe come to those courts back in 1969, I think it was. And it really impressed all of us that were tennis players and continue to be. And I just think that, I want to throw my name in the hat, for support of those courts being built with private funds at Summit Park.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have Lee Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Lee Thomas, and I'm a village resident, and I am part of the grassroots effort that is working to inform residents of Glendale about the GCICs and the village council's plans to sell and/or develop the village's green belts, green spaces, and parks. I wanted first for the council to know that we have distributed over 100-yard signs to village residents who are concerned about the plans to sell and/or develop these green spaces, and more signs are being requested daily. Secondly, I wanted to make the council aware that we, to date, have had 720 unique visitors to our website. That 720 village residents, different village residents that are seeking information on this topic that is very important to all of us. They are seeking information. As a result, I would like to formally request a virtual town hall meeting to be conducted as soon as possible so that these 720 Glendale residents can ask their questions, raise their concerns, and hear directly from council the plans and the issues that have brought village leadership to a place that selling off green belts, green spaces, and parks is even being considered. I understand that the last town hall meeting was poorly attended, but today, you have people's attention. I can assure you that there will be more than 30 residents attend this next town hall meeting. Having a town hall meeting is very important to us, so important that if the village council declines, and I hope you won't, the resident volunteers may host one and invite council members to speak. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Aldages.
I don't see her here on the list. No, I don't, I don't have her on the list of attendees.
Okay, we'll skip her for now and possibly come back to her. Angie Laramer?
Also not on the list of attendees present.
Mike Fagel?
Let's see, there we are. Been promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Lofti, for a chance to chat, and thank you, everyone, for the council, for letting us speak. I've lived in Glendale for about four years and really love this village. I think it's an amazing village, unique in the city of Cincinnati. So, so much, invited my, my parents have moved here, my in-laws and my in-laws' parents. We love the community. And I feel like what makes it so great is some of these green spaces to kind of carry on what Lee was talking about. I feel like the green spaces really give the community a chance to have nature, have a place for people to go and look at nature, and have animals, squirrels, deer, turkeys, all sorts of wildlife that we see when we go for walks. And so, again, to care about what Lee says, I really hope the village considers all angles for ways to address the problem and the reason for why we want to develop this area, an area that's been undeveloped since the beginning of, that Glendale's been a village, and hope you reconsider that. And I can get rid of the rest of my time, but thanks for the, the chance to chat and share our views. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Marty Vischer?
One moment, Mayor. Working on getting her promoted here. There we are. All right.
Good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me?
I think we can.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. My purpose here is to provide unconditional support for the proposal that Tony Brock has put together regarding the instruction of tennis courts and pickleball courts at Summit Field. I've known Tony for a number of years, and the tennis courts at Summit were installed during the time that I was involved with Glendale Youth Sports. The program that Tony envisions for the young people is modeled after safe passages that Arthur Ashe first envisioned, as I understand it. But I've seen Tony work with young people, and I think having a program where he and the young people of Glendale, as well as the adults who, who join as well, in, in playing tennis and pickle, will be much better off. It's a rare opportunity that we have a resident in, in a small community with as much experience and passion and known success as we do with Tony. So that's my, my, my purpose in joining the meeting. I did want to also note it in the council packet, I believe the, the, our document says 1996, and that's probably not correct because Mr. Ashe passed away in 1993. Thank you very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next, Bev Rickoff.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. I've just asked to attend the meeting, and I'd like to express my special thanks to Mayor Lofti, Tom Aldifer, and David Lumston for their help and support for our new volunteer day to be, that is being planned for Saturday, April 24th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bev. Cardi Hall?
Don't see Mr. Hall in the, oh, no, I, I take that back. I believe it's Thomas. Here we are.
Hello? This is Cardi Hall. I hope you can hear me. I have a bad internet connection here, and it seems to be going in and out, but.
I can hear you okay.
Okay, great. I just heard about all this, and and I found some information. I found this old letter in, in some of my, a file here, and it says, "Maintaining the Green of Glendale." It's written by Margaret Carlton, Building, Public Building Parks and Recreation Committee. It's just a couple paragraphs, so I'll read the whole thing. "I had the occasion last summer to view the tri-county area from a small plane. For as far as the eye could see, there was a vast, seemingly unending panorama of concrete and asphalt, except for a small oasis of green. A patch of color amidst the gray. Only the sharpest of eyes could detect a roof or two. It is this green, this patch of color, which separates Glendale from other villages. The lush trees which line our streets and fill our yards and parks and shroud us in beauty while protecting the small creatures so prevalent in our village. As chairperson of the Public Buildings, Parks, and Recreation Committee, it is my duty and the duty of the committee, Mr. Tom Benjamin and Dr. Frederick Botmar, to monitor the safety, maintenance, and growth within these areas." And it just seems to me that in such a short time, we have gone from having the duty to preserve that in such a short time, we have gone from having the duty to preserve our green spaces to selling them to developers to build senior citizen housing or something. And I, and I just feel they're treasures. We really can't, they kind of what make Glendale, Glendale. And, and we, the residents, don't even get a chance to, to, to vote on this. I, I just think that is something that's important, that everyone should, everyone's voice should be heard on this and, and because it is so important. And that's really all I have to say. But thank you for your time and in consideration. Yes. All right. That's it.
Ah, thank you. Next is Cheryl Weber.
I do not see Ms. Weber here on the attendees list.
We will keep going here. These are, the next group is folks who we believed were going to speak in support of the Summit Park tennis courts. Obviously, we've already captured a few of those. So I'll begin with Leslie Cooper. Leslie? I think she might be muted. Leslie, we can't hear you.
She's unmuted now, but I'm, she doesn't appear to be speaking. I don't know if it's a microphone issue or what might be going on.
Leslie, maybe you can leave the meeting and return and meanwhile, we will go to the next person, but we will come back to you. Is that okay? Okay. Next is Tony Brock.
David?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good. You got me. Thanks for the time. Appreciate the, the council and your time, but I just want to clearly state our, our need for resolution 2021-12. If it's passed to, to take effect immediately so that it gives us an official document where we can go out and to start to raise some money. Obviously, I'm in total support of the tennis courts and pickleball courts at Summit Field. And so I'm excited about tonight and I'm hoping that this will be the first step towards that becoming a reality. Thank you very much for your time.
Ah, thank you, Tony. Next is Stuart Halbauer.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. First of all, I want to thank you mayor and council. I know that's a thankless job you guys have, but I wanted to thank you. So be one of the, I'm sure you guys get thanks for doing that, but man, I can't imagine, you know, putting in the time like you guys do. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. I wanted to throw my hat in the, in the ring for Tony and I just can't wait for this to happen. It's going to be interesting to see how Tony does this because he, I've seen him in Los Angeles doing what he does and it's just going to be great for the village. I think it will help the, the, the values of the homes and, you know, if he's willing to do that, I mean, we are really lucky. And, and it's just going to be fun to see, you know, people actually up at the athletic field again, like it was when we were younger, when I was a kid. I mean, that place was crowded. They used to have the high school baseball games there. You know, we, we would have six diamonds going up there and gotta be great if we could get the tennis going and activities going with the kids exercising. And I wanted to throw my hat in there and I'm looking forward to it. And I know Tony's your man. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Paul Brydenbach.
I don't see Mr. Brydenbach in our list.
Then Tom Tobias.
I don't see Mr. Tobias either.
John Egbert?
Or Mr. Egbert, although I will say that Ms. Cooper's hand is raised now. Actually, as I say that, she disappears, but don't know if we want to try her again or not.
Well, is she on your list now?
She's, yes, she's here and, and her zoom hand has been raised.
Okay, let's let her in.
Leslie, are you there?
Leslie, you're muted right now. I'm not hearing her.
I'm not either.
Leslie, try pushing your spacebar and, and talking with your spacebar pushed out.
It's strange.
Right now I'm seeing her muted. Leslie, I'm, I'm very sorry. We're going to keep going through the agenda and I'll let you keep trying to get into the meeting with David. If you would like, David, is there a telephone number or some way that she can just call in?
Let me see if I have.
But first, let's see if we can get Michael Stewart promoted.
I don't know if I, this is Michael Stewart or not. There's a gentleman here just going by Michael. I might be Mr. Stewart. So we'll promote him and.
I believe it is me.
Excellent.
Council and staff, thank you for the quick moment. I'm just going to throw my hat in the ring also with the support for Tony's project. I've been trying to help them out with this over the last few months. I think it's going to be a great addition to the village. I've known Tony and the Brock family for over 50 years. We look forward to going out and raising some of these funds and just looking forward to working with the village to make this happen. Appreciate your time and efforts and looking forward to moving this thing along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. David, any progress? You're, you're muted.
Same problem. Let me see. I'm going to attempt to contact Ms. Cooper. I don't know if she can hear me, if she has my number, if she wanted to give me a call, but I'll try to contact her.
Okay. Are you want to do that right now?
Yeah, we can continue through the list and I'll report back once I have a little bit of luck hopefully. Actually, I believe she's calling me. One moment.
Okay.
In the meantime, Mayor Lofti, if you'd like me, this is Keith from ICRC. If you'd like me to allow people to speak, you can continue through the list.
Let me just see if we can get Ms. Cooper on the, on before the council.
Leslie, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie. Let's, thank, thank you for being patient.
Okay. Can everyone hear?
I can't hear her very well.
Leslie.
I think, I can hear you.
Yes, go ahead, Leslie. We'll see if we can get the volume to work.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Leslie Cooper. I am a standing up for child school as a resident of Glendale, not as a Glendale planning and historical preservation commission member. My parents own the property at 316 Cleveland Avenue, which is on the eastern side of the Cleveland Avenue Park. And the property extends the full length of the playground. We appreciate and are looking forward to the renovations that are planned for the Cleveland Avenue Park. We suggest that some sort of green barrier be planted along, I guess, the eastern side of the playground as a, as a green barrier between my parents' property and the playground. I'm sorry. Um, this is, this is basically, you know, the gist of what I had to say, but I just appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Clinton Francis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm speaking on behalf of Tony Brock and the Brock Foundation. I'm a former Glendalean, but a current resident of Orlando, Florida now. And I grew up playing tennis with a lot of the folks that have already spoken, Tony being one of them, Mike Stewart, the Halbowers. But because of the Brock family and Arthur Ashe, I was fortunate to play tennis at the old Summit Park, but also Queen City Racket Club. Summit would be great for those that don't have access to Queen City or the Lyceum. Tennis being a lifelong game, there will be no better teacher than you will find in Tony Brock. I've known him all of my life. We had some epic tennis battles together and I just know that he would be a wonderful teacher for adults and especially children. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next on my list is Lisa Brock.
I don't have Lisa specifically. There are two Tony Brock's. I'm not sure Lisa, if you're one of them or not. But if you are, raise your, your zoom hand and we'll see if we can get you into speak. I don't, I don't see.
Okay, let's, we're going to go back over the list of people we missed at the very end. So next, Brandon Carrier.
Yeah, I, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great. I'm also speaking on behalf of Tony Brock and the tennis pickleball in Glendale. And of the last three years, our family has got to know Tony and my, you know, nine-year-old and seven-year-old, we meet with Tony weekly and can go over his tennis accolades and all of his experience there. But I'd really like to hit on that Tony not only teaches my children tennis, but he involves life lessons into his programs. You know, them being sisters, he's always talking about teamwork, always talking about working together, encouraging each other. You know, one of the girls is struggling during something, he's, he's encouraging the other one to, you know, have the other one, help the other one out or encourage her. And just, there's so many life lessons that Tony is teaching, not just the lifelong sport of tennis that I hope my girls enjoy, but just different aspects that they can take out of his tennis program and what he's teaching them for the rest of their lives. I really look at Tony as one of the, you know, pillars that we have. My wife and I have chosen to put into our life to help raise our kids, to give them these experiences. And Tony is, is just, we are thankful every, every day that we found him and, and what he brings to not only our kids, but our family and just what an awesome person he is. And really want to promote that for Glendale and, and for Tony Brock. And I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Charlie Pierce.
Well, thank you council and the mayor for having me tonight. I'll be really brief. I only wanted to speak in absolute total support of Tony Brock's effort to rebuild the tennis courts at Summit Park. The return will be a true asset for the social part of the village. We need public tennis courts and the pickleball seems to be really hot. And the only other thing I wanted to say is, is to ask anybody in the village who thinks they might want to get involved with us rebuilding those courts at Summit Park to, and you want to participate, please contact the Brock Foundation at tonyb@thebrockfoundation.org. We can use all the support we can get. Thank you mayor very much.
Thank you. And next David Montgomery.
Thank you mayor and thank you council. I don't have a lot to add. I think the one thing that I would like to point out is just what a special place Summit Park was when I was a kid growing up in Glendale. I played baseball there. I learned to play tennis at the Lyceum. I was not a very good baseball player, but I was, the only sport I was ever any good at was tennis. And so I challenged our third baseman. I heard that he played a little tennis, but to a match at Summit Park.
You're breaking up a little bit on us.
Sorry about that. He beat me badly, but it started a lifelong friendship. And that third baseman was Tony Brock, who I've known now for about six decades. And I personally support the effort. I will spend time and energy promoting the, his venture. And I would love to see Summit Park come back to where it was then, where it was a place where all of us, no matter where we grew up in the village, where we went to church, where we went to, which side of the tracks we lived on, we all played together there and that's where we formed lifelong friendships. Clinton Francis also used to beat me back then. I think I might've taken a set off Michael Stewart though, but thank you so much and I hope you will support the resolution.
Thank you. Let me quickly go back over the list of people who were not present to see if any of them have joined us. Elizabeth Aldages.
No, she's not here.
Okay. Angie Laramer.
Is here.
Okay. Can you promote her?
Working on it now.
Am I in David?
You are. There you are.
Good. Hi, everyone. I'd like to speak to the mounting concerns of many of us around the topic of communications between the village council and Glendale residents. Our residents need to hear much more from you on these issues, among many others. The proposed sale, location and development of land in the village. There is a question on the agenda tonight about a property sale. Two, a possible new tax levy this fall. Three, the village financial picture, including clearer public disclosure of the severity of our present situation. We are running out of time. Why haven't we heard about this? Four, the routine waiving of the required three readings of ordinances claiming emergencies. These preclude opportunities for resident input. Insufficient time for individuals to comment during council and committee meetings. Commentary might be permitted only after an issue is resolved. Zoom invitations for one hour when meetings last longer. Government in the sunshine is the law, is the law of the land. And finally, how can we? And finally, how can we help? Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Paul Breidenbach. Is he here, David?
Um, he is not.
Okay. Um, Tom Tobias.
Is not in the list, is not on the list.
And finally, John Egbert.
Is also not on the list.
Okay, I guess we also didn't get Lisa, Lisa Brock.
Uh, no. Um, I, like I said, I, there are two Tonys. I'm not sure if one of them is Tony and one is Lisa. Um, I can promote Tony and we can ask if you'd like, but.
Why don't you do that? Just to be sure.
David?
Yes.
Yeah, my sister's not on tonight.
Oh, your sister, okay.
I had some issues with Zoom, that's why you see my name here twice.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry about that, but yes.
No, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Is, uh, those are all the names that I have. I want to make sure, Dave, Dave, is there anybody else in the, uh, group that would wave their hand or raise their hand saying they, uh, wanted to speak but weren't called upon?
Uh, none at this time.
Okay.
No hands are raised.
Okay, we're going now from public, uh, comment. Uh, there is no old business, so we'll go straight to, uh, new business. Um, we have ordinance, uh, 2021-10. Um, and that is an ordinance appointing Glendale volunteer firefighters, Cody Campbell, Jeremy Langston, and Caleb Lusby, establishing a one-year, uh, probationary period and declaring an emergency. I may have misspoke there, it's an ordinance appointing them, does that, did I get that right? But anyway, uh, Chief, can you tell us about these people?
Sure. Um, the first one, Cody Campbell, uh, comes to us, he's already a Level One firefighter, has his NIMs 100 and 700 with that. Uh, he's run as a firefighter in Massey Township also. Uh, Cody lives out in West Harrison, Indiana. Uh, Jeremy Langston, the second one, uh, from Fairfield, Ohio, currently working with First Care Ambulance. Um, Jeremy attended the American Military University. He does have an associate's degree in fire science, has worked as a wildland firefighter, also as a designer for fire sprinkler systems. Uh, Jeremy just completed our 36-hour volunteer firefighter class here in Ohio successfully. Um, Caleb Lusby, Caleb is a, also firefighter one and firefighter two, has his rope rescue certification, hazmat certification, and a, uh, fire inspector for the state of Ohio. That's our three gentlemen.
Uh, thank you. Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Was there a second?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, if there's none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
We want to wave the three reads. I don't have a motion or a second for the three reads.
Right. Okay, do I have a motion to wave three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk.
Okay. To dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baysmith.
Aye.
For the ordinance, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baysmith.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2021-11. An ordinance awarding the contract for the Cleveland Avenue, uh, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act Playground Project to DWA Recreation, Inc., in the amount of $94,632 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Baysmith, uh, would you care to give us some background here?
Uh, yes, the, uh, award is a result of a grant from the community, the development, uh, organization, and, uh, that was arranged through, uh, Mr. Cordis, and, uh, through a bidding process, which originally, there were no bids, it was put out for bids a second time with a response from four vendors. Uh, the, uh, park committee met to review the four bids, to discuss the equipment design, and to debate, uh, any changes that could be made or additions to, uh, the park to improve it. Uh, with that discussion, a motion was made, uh, to present it to council and was approved unanimously. There, uh, by the way, I would suggest that anyone who would like, uh, additional detail, I refer them to the Glendale Weekly Newsletter. There's a very comprehensive and well-written summary of the, uh, process there. Thank you.
Mr. Baysmith, we might also add that part of the project, after the contractor's done, is for the village to enhance landscaping on the eastern border, as Ms. Leslie Cooper mentioned or reported.
Uh, thank you. Yes, that was part of the, the, uh, the, uh, resolution. Thank you.
Uh, also, uh, Mr. Chair, Jeff Baysmith, the committee discussed, uh, and was informed that the equipment during the construction period and, uh, the debris and all of that related thereto will be maintained on public property and not on the private property adjacent to the park.
So I understand, yes.
Mr. Baysmith, do I have a motion for this ordinance?
I move. Second.
And do I have a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved. Second.
Um, any, any further discussion?
Um, I think it's worthwhile pointing out that in addition to everything that was said here, that, um, the difference between the available funding, which is approximately $90,500, and the bid price of $94,632, will be taken from previously appropriated funds under the community fund, um, to, to make up the difference between the CDVG grant and the cost of the project.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
To dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baysmith.
Aye.
For the ordinance, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baysmith.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carried. The next ordinance is ordinance 2021-12, uh, which has already been discussed, uh, by, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Vischer. Frankly, this is one that we didn't expect a, a lot of discussion on. It was, uh, intended, uh, at the park board, uh, was discussed with the park board, and the thought was simply that it removed confusion because some people came to park board meetings thinking that they were going to be there to discuss our parks, uh, when actually that's the subject for our playgrounds and recreation, uh, committee, and the park board as such is primarily functions as an urban forestry board. However, I'll be quite frank with you, uh, Mr. Vischer has raised some issues that, uh, were not considered by the park board or by, uh, the village, and, um, I think I, I'm inclined to, uh, pull this, uh, ordinance, uh, from the agenda, uh, at this point, and give it some further research and, and thought. Um, is there any?
Mr. Mayor, I'd say I would agree with that. I, like Mr. Vischer, tried to do research and could not find advantages to making this change, and, um, other than the one you just stated, I don't know what advantage there is to the village to make this particular change. I just saw this on Friday when the packet went out and had limited time to look, but I have more questions about it than anything else as well.
I would agree with that as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also agree with that. Uh, it came to me as a surprise when I opened the council's package, and I do, I too have questions of substance.
We will, as I said, we're going to do some further research on this subject and, and get back to you. So right now, we're just pulling this, uh, from the agenda. Um, ordinance, uh, 2021-13, an ordinance directing the Glendale Community Improvement Corporation to sell a certain vacant property lot, transferring said property to the, uh, Glendale Community Improvement Corporation, uh, reimbursing the village of Glendale for past expenses and declaring an emergency. Um, I think Mr. Cordis and Mr. Lumsden really have the best, uh, background information on this. This has been discussed at the, uh, uh, Community Improvement Corporation meetings, but I know this is the first time council is hearing about it.
Yes, um, this was discussed at length in the CIC meetings. This, um, ordinance refers to what was once the Eggers Truck Stop parcel, which is a single-family residential zoned property that is grandfathered non-conforming, um, to allow for the construction of a single-family home. It's located south of the water tower, between the water tower and Van Ness, where it empties out onto Route Four. Um, the village purchased the property while, I might ask for your assistance on this one. Um, was it in the nineties, I believe? Um, and demolished the building that was on the property, and now want to make it available for sale for someone to develop a single-family home conforming with the existing zoning on the property.
You're very accurate, David. You nailed it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, data questions right off the top.
Okay, I'd like to get this motion, this motion on, ordinance on the table, though. Do I have a motion for the ordinance?
So moved.
Uh, second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads? No motion, we will treat this as a three-read, uh, ordinance, and, uh, but, uh, we can, so the ordinance has now been moved and seconded, it is on the table, and, uh, we can discuss it and then consider what we're going to do next.
Am I recognized, Mr. Mayor?
I recognize, Ms. Duke.
Thank you. Section two describes the, uh, gives the address of the property at 10860 Springfield Pike. There's not a structure there, so I was unable to locate a, a sign, an address sign. There's also a parcel number identified, and I'm asking, what is the lot size and shape? Uh, lot size in terms of acreage or square feet? And, um, is that irregular square, rectangular? Is it a buildable lot? What is the condition of the, uh, the land there? Is it wetland? Um, is it flat? Can you give us some data on this particular parcel?
I can, I can help with that. Um, I'm waiting for KJIS to open up so I can give a full image of the, um, of this lot. But it is a, more or less a square, um, a little irregular square, but it's, but a square. Um, it is a buildable lot in that it did have a structure on it prior to the implementation of our zoning code, so therefore it qualifies as a buildable lot, even though it is under the, uh, minimum required square footage for a lot. Um, if you give me just a second here, as I pull up the property, I can show you as, as I discuss it. So the address was what was assigned to the original structure on the parcel. Um, I'm waiting for KJIS to catch up to me, but it's this lot right here, um, that it is next door to this property. So that address and parcel ID were assigned when, when there was a structure on the property. Uh, so it does have plenty of frontage onto Route Four, and although it is, um, is under the minimum required for a lot, um, in this zoning district, it is grandfathered because it is a pre-existing lot, uh, so that existing, that conformance is pre-existing and therefore is, is not enforced.
Are there any further questions or discussion?
Yes, I, I didn't hear the lot size, square feet, acreage? What, what?
Let me pull up the.
David, it's, uh, it's one-third acre. And it's in a half-acre district, so it is grand.
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's, it's .39 acres in a half-acre district.
Okay. Is it wetland or is it flat? What, what's the condition of the, uh, surface there?
To my knowledge, it's, it's flat and dry and relatively buildable.
I agree. The sea elevation is 626 feet above sea level. It's in a tri area, and it used to support, uh, a business for the parking lot, so I never, I've never known it to have a water problem.
And what does it abut, uh, in the, the east side?
This is the, this is Summit Park. Um, I apologize, KJIS is a little slow this evening, uh, but this is Summit Park, and this would constitute the outfield, with a far outfield, of one of the baseball diamonds at the park.
David, you might want to go to HamiltonCountyOrder.org, put in the address, and then go to pictures, then back up to picture 2020, and you can see the old truck stop that was there. It's, it's very helpful.
And someone with the agenda in front of them, let me know what that number is. I don't remember. Is it?
David, um, 596-0005-0047. You have the address, Mike? There you go. If you click on picture, David, and go back a few years, you can see what used to be there.
Really?
This Eggers truck. See, it's very high and dry and a very undesirable property in the nineties. Council authorized administrator to buy it for $40,000. We spent about $8,000 to tear down the building and restore it into a buildable lot, and we, uh, land-banked it, so that's what we have today.
And what is the lot size or of the, uh, houses to the south of the, uh, of that, of that property?
So to the south?
Much larger.
The south of that property, um, constitutes the rear yards of homes on Van Ness Drive, so those lots are much, much larger. Um, a better comparison perhaps would be the property just to the north of the, that abuts it on the northern portion. Um, it's approximately the same size and also has a, a smaller home on it. It would be this parcel right here. I apologize, KJIS isn't loading quickly for me, but, um, it would be this parcel.
Well, we'll have more opportunity to discuss this, uh, this transaction or potential ordinance, and, uh, I would like to know more about the lot, the adjacent properties on the south side, because it appears to me those properties may be impacted more so than that to the, uh, the north.
So to, yeah, to give you an idea here of what has loaded here, unfortunately, um, this is Van Ness Drive, there's a home here, a home here, this would be in the far rear yard of, of the, of that structure right there, that, that home right there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I have other questions, which I'll defer until later date, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, we will, this, this is now moved and seconded, it's on the table, and it's, uh, right now is, it maybe, may require three reads, or we can wave, wave three reads at the next meeting. Um, we're going to turn now to, uh, Resolution, uh, 2021-09. Um, a resolution authorizing the village of Glendale to enter into an agreement for the. A resolution authorizing the village of Glendale to enter into an agreement for the purchase of electricity. For the village's electricity aggregation program and declaring an emergency. This is a fairly routine thing that we've done many times in the past, so. I'll ask Mr. Cordis to explain it, but I wonder if somebody, if I just can have a motion for the ordinance.
So moved.
So second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Carter or or David can.
I yield to Mr. Lumsden.
Yes, Mayor, you are absolutely correct. This is a relatively procedural step. The time has come for us to pursue renewal options for the village's electric aggregation. I met with the Affordable Gas and Electric Company, which is. Quite the name for for this consultant firm that we work with. Along with some other communities in the Cincinnati area and went over potential. Rate options. They're going to continue to update those and once we have one that's competitive for. Term that benefits all of our electric customers in the village. We'll pursue that and and lock that rate in for a period of one year to three years. Based on the the language of this resolution.
Is there any discussion questions? And Madam Clerk?
To dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
For the resolution, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
Thank you.
We turn to Resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. A resolution approving the assignment of Lieutenant Craig Walsh as acting police chief. Effective May first, twenty twenty one, until such time as a permanent police chief is appointed by ordinance and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion dispensed with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, that that language is not on that resolution. They need to add the emergency, declaring an emergency.
In the title of the resolution.
I'm sorry, now what what isn't, what isn't in the resolution?
There's no declaration of an emergency.
The emergency language is not in the title block of your resolution.
You're right, you're right. It is in, it is in section three in the ordinance. I apologize.
And another, and another perhaps friendly amendment here, the first whereas has. The current chief Warman's retirement date is April thirty first, should be April thirtieth.
That is correct.
There you go.
Can we consider these friendly amendments?
Scrivener errors.
So so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this resolution, of course, comes to us because of the imminent retirement of our longtime Chief of Police, Chief Warman. And we are appointing Lieutenant Walsh, who has been with the village in the police department almost as long as Chief Warman. And has held the rank of lieutenant for a long time and demonstrated. In the chief's opinion, in my opinion, his ability to carry out the functions of. The acting police chief. We will be considering all options as we as this goes forward. So. Is there any discussion of this resolution? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
To dispense with the three reads, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
For the resolution, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven. A resolution authorizing the administrator to execute a joint agreement for a Sharon Road Bridge. GLE oh. Five one four agreement as requested and approved by the Hamlin County Prosecutor. And I'm going to ask, I think, Mr. Cordis or Mr. Lumsden to give us some background on this resolution.
With pleasure. So as part of, and this this project has been. Has been on the table for a very, very long time, both in. Construction, engineering work, but also in construction, unfortunately, as as we all remember last year. But now that it has been completed, it is time to move to the next stage of the project, which is to sign. The agreement that's before council this evening, which. Transfers all responsibility for the maintenance and and. Service on this bridge, now that it has been constructed, to Hamilton County. So they will take over. Easements and those kinds of. Requirements to to maintain the bridge, now that the village has had it constructed.
Do I have a motion for this ordinance, right, resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
I think we've also forgot the section three emergency language in the title. I'd like to make a friendly emotion to add that.
So a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So is.
I'll make a motion for the resolution.
For the resolution.
Second.
And a motion dispensed, well, we don't need to, do we need to do three reads on this, Kathy?
Oh.
Okay.
It's since it's a resolution, you do not need to do three reads.
Okay.
Make a motion for the emergency.
The red, the emergency is part of the resolution now, so moving for the resolution will be the same as moving for is emergency. Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For the resolution, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
Thank you.
We turn to Resolution. Twenty twenty one dash twelve. A resolution of support for efforts by Anthony Brock and the Brock Foundation in coop cooperation. With the village of Glendale to develop and promote tennis and pickleball courts and related programs at Summit Park. This motion comes to us from the Playgrounds and Recreation Recreation Committee. Mr. Basemith, can you give us some background here?
Yes.
Already know, we already feel we know a lot about it.
It's been pretty thoroughly discussed and promoted and recommended, and yes, the committee met with a presentation from Mr. Brock. And with some Zoom. Attendees who voiced their support and admiration for Mr. Brock and his capabilities. And reviewing all of the opportunities and. Advantages to the village is the committee. Unanimously agreed to a resolution to present this to the council for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Basemith. Are you making a motion for this resolution?
Oh, I'm okay. I would be happy to make that motion. I move that it be approved.
Second. Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have two friendly amendments. One is the. Date, the year nineteen ninety six be changed to nineteen sixty nine. Sixth paragraph.
Got it, and a little dyslexia going on there, but okay.
And the other friendly amendment is for council to be consistent, at least tonight. And add the and declaring an emergency clause in the title and also a new. Section two with the typical declaring an emergency language.
Your motion for that change?
Mayor, I would recommend that if you do amend and add a section two, that as part of the motion, you add a brief statement as to the need to enact. By emergency, which will be necessary in the. Legislation.
Yeah, we'll use our our standard emergency language. In our state, in our, in the section.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, all those in favor of making these changes, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, dude. We have the motion and it's been seconded. And we don't have to dispense with three reads. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, since this is declaring an emergency, we may want to vote to dispense with three reads, just to cross our T, dot our Ts.
I'm going to take our solicitor on that one. It's not necessary for a resolution. We haven't, yeah. So I think we can live without it. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
For the resolution, Mr. Bessel.
Aye.
Mr. Hoeller.
Aye.
Ms. Duke.
Aye.
Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemith.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now turn to reports from the mayor and standing committees and special committees. We're going to begin with. The proclamation for Arbor Day. And we do this every year to as part of our designation of of being a tree city. And I will read this into the record and then sign it. So. Where at proclamation celebrating Arbor Day twenty twenty one in the village of Glendale, Ohio. Whereas the purpose of Arbor Day is to promote a continuing awareness of the values of trees and forests for the village citizens of Glendale, Ohio. And whereas trees and urban forest are an important component of our community's infrastructure. And whereas the conservation and restoration of our tree-lined streets and forested green belts. Through proper management maintains, remains a part of our strategy and is a long-range goal. And whereas the Glendale Park Board Program promotes reforestation of our tree canopy and community beautification. And whereas the village with private grants and funds has trimmed and removed dead trees as needed. Ground stumps and planted trees of various species to continue the reforestation of our tree canopy. And whereas five hundred free tree seedlings were distributed. In March twenty twenty one to the public to support and celebrate Arbor Day in twenty twenty one. Now therefore, I, Donald A. Lofti, Mayor of the Village of Glendale, Ohio. Do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, as Arbor Day in the Village of Glendale. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to promote and nurture our trees and urban forest. Not just for the beauty they provide, but for the many environmental benefits they provide our community. In witness whereof, I have hereon to subscribe my name this twenty ninth day of March in the year two thousand twenty one. Signed, Donald A. Lofti, Mayor.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. We had no births reported and we will acknowledge the deaths when we can do so in person. I should note that in keeping with the Arbor Day theme, we received an official letter from the president of the Arbor Day Foundation. Giving us, notifying us that we have been designated a Tree City USA once again. This is our twenty-fifth consecutive year. And that we have also received a a growth award. So this is part of the village's commitment to maintaining our our trees. I will say the laws committee at its meeting, and I know this will come up, but. Asked that the solicitor report on the status of litigation concerning an easement for construction and maintenance. Of the bridge at Sharon Avenue. And of course, this information is being stated publicly, so it will not be legally privileged. But it will give council an update as to where that litigation stands. Madam Solicitor?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, that litigation was filed in late two thousand nineteen and the money that. That is the value of the property that was part of that project was placed on deposit at that time with the court. And from that point on, it was accessible to the property owner. Because the property is within the name of a trust, the courts require that it, the parties be represented by an attorney rather than by any individuals. At some point, well past the time at which the property owner needed to answer that. Something was filed that was not filed by an attorney. There has been considerable time to have. That postponed or certain delays allowed to. Provide them an opportunity, opportunity to get an attorney. At one point, they did file an answer slash counterclaim. That was filed by the property owners, not by the trust, but by the individuals that are non-attorneys. That live there. So at this time, the court will be considering, I think it's on. April twelfth, we have two motions before the court. One is for a motion to dismiss. The the counterclaims, both on timeliness and the substance of them. And then the second motion is a motion for default judgment on the basis of there being no valid. Answer to proceed with any kind of challenge to the valuation provided by the village when this was initially filed. So once we go through the motion hearing that morning, we'll be able to report back on the outcome of that.
Thank you. Turning to the COVID front, I'm pleased to report that there are only, as this time, three active. COVID nineteen cases in the village of Glendale, which is coming down considerably from what it has been in the past. And we have our testing at at Town Hall. Which the last scheduled day of testing is tomorrow, May thirtieth, Tuesday. However, we are hoping to hear from the folks at. Health Care Cooperative that they will extend that testing for at least another month. We are one of the few communities in our area that has this kind of a testing. Facility and it's, I think, a great thing for the village to have it so so handy for us. You heard resident, our resident Bev Rickoff speak about a volunteer day. They, she has been working with. A number of other people to organize a volunteer day to do some work in the parks and green spaces. In the village and she and Cindy Taylor are now contacts for it. And there will be some additional information published in the Friday, upcoming Friday newsletter. So keep, stay tuned for that. The fire station is past another milestone and it's in the completion of its construction. I'm going to let the Chair of the Fire Department or and or the Chief give you that information at the, during the Fire Committee Report. Memorial Day has been a, it's been a very difficult decision for me. And I kept trying to figure out how can we have a parade safely? And I couldn't get to an answer that I was satisfied with. Yes, the cases are going way down, but cases are still at an overall level that they were at. Last spring when I decided that we had to that we couldn't have a parade. The. I'm just, I think I'm just concerned about our veterans. I don't want to expose them to a situation that many of them are older and have some physical disabilities. And I'm just not comfortable exposing them to to hazard. However, as we did last year, we are not going to let this year go by without honoring our veterans. We are going to have a full ceremony at the memorial and. I am pleased to report that Mike Fasselt will perform his usual role of organizing those veterans who want to attend. And to. To supervise the firing escort. And I'm also pleased to report that resident Hildy Bonhouse has agreed to organize the overall ceremony. Those of you who know Hildy knows that her organizational skills are formidable. And I can tell you that she she has already reported to me. That she has arranged with the Cincinnati River Rats, which is the airplane. Group to do their their flyover, which is always a big hit for the for the ceremony. So with that, I'm going to ask our clerk to call for the committee reports.
Thank you. Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee did not meet last month. We are scheduled to meet in the month of April. On the fifteenth and we will have an agenda go out for that several days in advance of that meeting. Our main purpose for the meeting is to take a look at where we are through the first quarter. And then from a financial standpoint. Project out the then the last nine months of the year and then also try to do a quick projection for what twenty twenty-two will look like. And we'll also consider the impact on the budget of some major capital improvements that will be going on this year. In the village, or at least that are being organized and prepared to take place in the village this year with road improvements. And some stormwater improvements. That's it for finance.
Thank you. Fire Committee, please.
There is nothing requiring the attention of councils, so the Fire Committee didn't meet. However, significant progress on the work being done at the firehouse and I would turn it over to Chief Hardwick to to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, very pleased now if anybody has been traveling west on Sharon Road and realize that the. Replacement of the doors on the east side of the building has been completed. These doors are a are a great addition to our building. It just opens us up to continue development of that that side of the building and kind of finish up the project. We've got one remaining item left on the inside of the just behind inside of those doors. And that's currently being worked on or waiting for some materials to be delivered. So we can wrap that up and finally put the entire project here at the firehouse behind us. On our normal activities for the month, we'll get the report out for the all of everything that happened for the month after after the this week. So we've got a couple of highlights from the month. The biggest one we had was we've been able to finish our we did two firefighter certification levels. This just ended up this month. We have a volunteer firefighter class, which was a hundred or I'm sorry, a thirty-six hour class. The firefighter one class works out to be a hundred and fifty-four hour training class. Both of those classes completed and I'm very, very pleased to say that. Everybody that has tested so far, we've got one person left to get tested. Everybody else has successfully passed that certification. Getting that hundred percent rating is is a wonderful testament to our instructors that that we use for that. We had seven or eight people involved in instruction. That that's just a great, great addition to our our department. One of the people that is we just brought on tonight was one of the thirty-six hour people, so it is a value to us. We weren't, we did do a part of that. We did a live fire training exercise at the Cincinnati Fire Department. Along with Green Hill, St. Bernard and Hanover Township, Alabotler County. That's that's a full training day of active fires. We did, we completed seven evolutions in live fire training, getting everybody through the various levels. It's a great, great training day. The weather couldn't have been better, actually. Like we mentioned earlier, the COVID numbers continue to get better. Just please don't allow that that getting better as a sign that we can let up. We need to continue on with masking and social distancing. As we move forward. And last but not least, since we finished our fire classes. Next week, we start an EMT class here in the department for those people that desire us of becoming emergency medical technicians. So it's been a good, a good month here, except for the Fire Department.
Thank you.
May I? Mr. Mayor and Chief Hardwick, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention to you that my hat is off to Mr. Bogran for his oversight and management of the door installation.
Absolutely.
Job well done.
We're here.
He really sweated the small stuff and the big stuff. He sweated a lot.
Still more sweating to be done because we've got the inside that we're still finishing up, so he's not done yet.
He's at a loss for words. I've never seen that before.
Hey, Madam Clerk.
Law, laws and claims, please.
Thank you. The Laws and Claims Committee briefly met on March twenty-fourth. And at the outset of that meeting, we postponed discussion of the matter previously deferred by the Police Committee. I would like to thank the Solicitor and the Mayor for the update we've heard this evening. On the pending lawsuit that the village had filed regarding the Sharon Road Bridge project. We appreciate being informed. During the committee meeting, the committee observed a moment of silence in recognition of the recently deceased Richard O'Swab. Primarily because of his having initiated action, which the committee considered and acted upon around one year ago to this date. That action led to council passing ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven and the subsequent. Installation of no engine brake traffic signs on Congress Avenue. As the mayor has said frequently and again this evening, council will be called upon in some time to recognize. All residents who've died in the past several months of COVID. And I'm quite sure we'll be hearing more about the deceased Richard Swab and his contributions to our village. Let me conclude by saying, now that the Police Committee Chair is back with us. The committee will be scheduling a meeting to take up the matter deferred. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
I have not had a chance to call a meeting. I've not had a chance to meet with Lieutenant Walsh, which I intend to do soon. But we, the what the Chairman Duke referred to is the abandoned vehicle. Laws that we were doing some research on to see what other communities do. At which time it would move to the Laws and Claims Committee. So I think very shortly, once, once Lieutenant Walsh is briefed on where we stand on that that project. I I would like to have a joint meeting with the Laws and Claims. And we could have a discussion about that. And 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 see what we can come up with if that is agreeable to Chairman Duke.
Sounds good.
Okay, and so with that, I turn this over to Lieutenant Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Hoeller. Thank you, Mayor. End of the month reports are not complete yet because the month. And until Wednesday, I will have those done on Thursday and mailed out or emailed out to everybody at that time. Couple brief things. We are here in the last couple of weeks have received several calls for identity thefts. People getting credit cards and other people's names. Also, people missing mail out of their mailbox, not getting mail. Along with people filing unemployment claims. I will be putting out a all call tomorrow to residents to inform them of these issues. And be diligent in checking their mailboxes, checking packages and everything else around their their property. When they're out and about. Also, we have continued to this month. We have gotten more officers through crisis intervention training, mental health training. Which is a big push and a big issue here in the state of Ohio and all over the country. We will continue to get officers into that in the upcoming months. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, Mr. Kreidler is out. Does anybody else have have anything to report for that in his absence?
I can, I was at that meeting and Mr. Kreidler sent me a brief synopsis. Let me pull that up. They met on, we met on March seventeenth. Discussed building maintenance and repair schedules for twenty twenty-one. And his minutes will be posted within the next week. It appeared at the meeting that most of the issues that were discussed were either in the process of being handled. Or were being scheduled out with Tom Alder for 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 public buildings maintenance and repair. And that's it for public buildings.
Great, thank you. Recreations and playgrounds, please.
Recreations and playgrounds did meet, as I think everyone is aware of. We met and had the presentation from Mr. Brock. And I will, I hesitate to review that completely again. I can start with many pages of his enterprise and all of the the achievements that he has the opportunity to bring to Glendale. We have all heard many people speak this evening in support of that and the the committee and council has supported it. And look forward to progress and would review that as soon as the next Parks Recreation Committee meets. That's it.
Thank you. Streets Public Improvement and Lights, please.
The Streets Committee is scheduled to meet on April sixth. Currently, the Village Administrator and the Administrative Assistant. Are working with Tom Alder for to 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 set a schedule for street improvements for the summer months and the fall months. And we will go through that on our April sixth meeting. Also, again, considering the financial impact of some of the more expensive improvements that will be undertaken this this summer. That's all for streets.
Thank you. Utilities, please.
Utilities did not meet in this month. We plan to meet on. April the fifteenth prior to the Finance Committee meeting. As long as I have spoken with the mountain and I have not spoken with Helen yet, but we can make it one swell day of having meetings. To celebrate the fact that it's April fifteenth. And tax day has been deferred to May fifteenth, so we'll use that time to have a meeting. At that point in time, I'd like to be able to review the progress, any changes with the replacement of the. New Sharon Water Main and to get an update on the other. Projects ahead of the utilities, the what's called the C-MOM and look at other. Issues that will be on the agenda presented before that day. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we have miscellaneous business reports of Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
I have no report.
Okay, Mr. Treasurer, do you have a report?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report. I am waiting for the statements from our investment firms to be able to summarize that and send that to council. I plan to do that later on this week and. That's probably about it. Oh, I do. I do want to point out as receiving the accolades from from my fellow colleagues here on the firehouse. That the improvements could not be possible without the generous donation from our residents. And in this case, Ron and Marty Vischer. Could not have done any of this work without their very, very generous contribution. So again, we need to thank them for their support on this on this endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We have received some financial reports that I'm going to list now. We have received the general checking certification for the payment of certain bills. Through March twenty-ninth, that's today, twenty twenty-one. We have received the Enterprise Checking Certification for the Payment of Certain Bills, again, through March twenty-ninth. We have received a revenue report. Through March twenty-ninth. And we have received the expenditure report through March twenty-ninth. And we have received a cash transactions report through March twenty-ninth. So, ah, let's see, did I maybe have missed that? I am sorry. I take that back. Let me go through those again.
If you like, Mayor, I can cover it very quickly here.
Would you please?
Absolutely. So the check registers are through today. We do, we we don't anticipate any more checks in the month of March. So we're gonna, we're gonna cut those off with the check registers this evening. So the ones that you'll receive in May will be the April check registers. The expenditure and revenue reports are through the end of February as March has not closed out yet.
Right.
For revenues, so we will close those out and get you the full March reports by the May meeting. And depending on that date, the the April reports as well. I'm not, I don't have that number in front of me, but we will, we will get there. So we'll get those to you as well in May.
And the cash transaction report is through the month of February.
Correct, yeah, revenue expenditures and cash transactions.
So do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of these reports?
Don't move.
All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we are now at final stop here and I'm glad to see we're all, we're all hanging in there. I just had, I just couldn't let this day go by. Wally Cordis' last day as our village administrator. Without saying a few words and anyone who is so inclined can can say what say whatever they want about the guy, you know? I mean, is maybe insult him, what the heck, you know? But what I will say is that in twenty-seven years, Mr. Cordis has has served as the administrator of the village. And in two stints, his latest one, when he returned in. Served as the Administrator of the Village, um, and in two stints, um, his latest one being when he returned uh in twenty seventeen. Uh, and uh, has been there in that job. Where he will stay, I might add, until Wednesday. He is still with us until Wednesday, so we can still get as. Much work out of him as we can between now and the end, close of business then. Um. He has just done so much for the village and and I could talk forever about it, of course, but I just want to just make a few notes here. Um, you know, one of the things that kind of gets unsung here is that he uh really reinvigorated the Friday newsletter. Which um had been kind of the tail on the dog uh for the, for the weeks, uh, whatever happened, and. Mostly it was covered, you know, its news was covered in uh daily uh email blasts, which people complained. Uh, crowded up their inboxes, and uh Wally not only created fresh articles, so he's an excellent writer. Uh, for the newsletter, but then he also uh combined what would have been daily blasts into the final newsletter, and it really is something now. Uh, worth reading. Um, everybody knows that Wally is a, is Mister, Mister Grant Hustler, and uh he has uh. Pursued and obtained so many grants for the village that it's, it's hard to, you know, hard to even think about them. But uh, just, just today, we voted on one. The uh work at Cleveland Park. Um, was going to cost the village uh uh maybe as much as fifty thousand dollars. And uh, he was able to get a grant for a hundred thousand dollars, which gave us a much nicer uh result and uh. Is going to make that park really shine. Uh, and then finally, I've got to say. Maybe his crowning, it may, it may be his crowning achievement at some point, but he recruited his successor. And we are very fortunate uh to have David uh Lumsden uh coming aboard uh as, as Administrator. He is. Been with us now for uh over a year and a half and uh has done a terrific job, and and I know that we all have a lot of confidence in him in the future. So that's what I got to say, and uh I invite anybody else uh chime in or whatever.
Mister Mayor, if I may, I jotted down a few notes. So um, Wally, thank you for your, for your years of service, both prior and then the last few. Your, your practical leadership has been very good for our village. Um, Don mentioned your grant writing, which is, which has been excellent. Um, your expertise in all areas of village government, and then specifically to the history of Glendale. You, you have an uncanny knack for being able to recall. Um, different historic events in Glendale and. And and let's also say you know where all the bodies are buried, so that's always a good thing. I hope you give David the key to that skeleton closet so he can pull those out when he needs them. Um, and uh, your, your recognition always of other village officials and their contributions. Um, it, it's easy to let the accolades fall on you when you're the administrator, but you always point out. Um, who has done a good job and uh, and and you, you manage the departments that you manage, you manage them well. Um, and 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 that's another, you know, very good quality you have. And as Don mentioned, you helped identify your successor, and I. See in David some of the same qualities that I, that I see in you, and I think uh the village will be in good hands. Um, so i- i- in, in closing, you, you are always focused on the overall good for the village and its residents. Um, you, you treat the other uh village officials and employees with respect and and uh. That's very much appreciated. Um, Glendale uh is a better place for having you, and the residents appreciate your work. And uh, in closing, hope to see you at the Bluebird often for coffee. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, if I may.
I mean, that, yeah, this is gonna be a little personal. Um, but.
Wally, I really want to thank you for your guidance, um, your patience, uh specifically with me. As I entered the uh, you know, Treasurer's position for Glendale. You taught me a lot, you gave me a lot of guidance. And uh, clearly made me a better person to try to help our residents in the process. Uh. I will miss our uh, our discussions and meetings about how to make improvements, and. I'm sure you're not gonna miss my long list of emails that I send you almost on a daily basis, so. I uh, like Mike said, I uh hope to meet you at the Bluebird soon and uh also at the Friendly Stop. So thanks again for everything you've done for me, but also for the village.
Uh, Mister Mayor, can I be recognized?
You are recognized.
Thank you. Wally, you remind me of the hardest working man in show business, James Brown. Over the years, Wally, you have really come through time and time again with platinum hits for Glendale. Um, Don and Mike Bessel, so many others have already spoken about. Your ability to get grants and loans and money from whatever lawful sources from Glendale's. Uh, for Glendale's Public Works and and our Utilities Enterprise. Uh, but for me, Wally, you're also known and respected, and that goes a long way. Your quiet, yet firm demeanor. While getting those smooth results for our village has really left an impact on a lot of people, a lot of people. I know you've taken a lot of heat, a lot of sharp words from residents. And that you seldom receive accolades, and that takes a lot uh to tolerate. But most importantly, Wally, I've found you to be a reliable and respected public administrator for Glendale. So I will miss you as Glendale's Administrator. I do look forward to working closer with David. And I think you're a tough actor song to follow. Enjoy your retirement.
Could I say, could I say a word to you?
I have an essay.
Um, it's, and it's more personal because you've, you've talked about. His, his, um, his tremendous knowledge of our village and his deep understanding and respect for the history. Of the village. I've only known Wally during his second act um as Administrator, so um. You know, my, my uh connection with him is a little bit shorter. Uh, but, but it's important on a, on a personal note, as Mike Bogran said. I, Wally, I will always be grateful for the help you gave me when I was first elected to council. And I started working through the complexities of public service. Your patience. Is not, it is just not to believe, and and I tested it. I mean, I know I tested it. And texts on weekends, you, I, you, you were just amazing. I. I thank you so much, Wally. Um, we will miss you so very much. Good luck on your retirement, and most important, good luck up north.
Mister Mayor, can I say something to Wally?
Please do.
I said it the first time he retired, so I'm not gonna say anymore. Um, but I figure you'll be back in about a, a year and a half, because you'll be so bored. So then you'll have to work for David. All right, have a good retirement. I consider you a good friend. Thank you.
Okay, we will, as I said, have uh another chance. Ah, Mister Basemuth.
If I may, yes, uh, Wally, I want to thank you for listening to me, not so much as my recent uh. Uh, tenure on the council, but for. The many times over the years that have come into your office and that it's always been very uh. Impressive that a citizen could, could come into the village office and sit down and and talk with the administrator. Get a uh, get a uh, a listening ear and walk away quite completely. And and not know why. Uh, although maybe it was the cookies, but uh, that's the one thing I'm going to miss. I don't know if David is going to be bringing cookies, but uh. It uh is certainly a uh good habit to form, David. And Wally, thank you for a great performance. Uh. This, all this is recorded, and so as you are looking for references for your next job. Uh, simply ask them to tune into YouTube, and they can hear all the compliments that uh are made about you accurately. Thank you very much for what you've done.
Mayor, do you mind if I say something to Wally?
Please do.
Wally, I owe you a uh, a debt of thanks, uh, giving a young kid back in nineteen ninety-one the opportunity to work for the village of Glendale. Uh, it's been a pleasure. Enjoy Act Two.
If, if I may.
Yes.
Wally, after hearing all of these comments this evening, thank you for setting the bar so darn high. Um, and that I am very honored that uh council is putting the same level of trust in me. Uh, well, close to, like, because I, I don't think I'll ever, I'll ever get as close to Wally. Um, and me to, to take over for him. Um, the two years that I've been in the village have been a tremendous learning experience for me. And um, in, I look forward to taking on and and. Bringing myself up to his level of service and standard and work ethic and all those wonderful things that people have gone on about, so. Um, thank you, Wally. Thank you for everything, and I look forward to, to taking over for your, at your desk.
Thank you all so much. If I have just a moment of time, Mister Mayor, I didn't.
You expected nothing less.
I'm floored, um, but I am reminiscent of August of, I'm sorry, July of two thousand seventeen, when Mayor Loffe called me up at the cottage. I was looking over the lake and I was. Just about to have a, an adult beverage, and we talked for about forty-five minutes, and I was trying to think of how to say no. I, I don't think I can come back. When Loretta gave her notice to leave, but he talked about the people working for him, the employees are there, and he also talked about the council. That um I soon began to know and and later love. And he talked me into it because of the people that I would get to work with, so I said yes, and I came back and it was only going to be for four or five months, and then. It turned into three and a half years, three and a half wonderful years, and I am so glad I got to work with all of you. It's been an incredible experience. I take no credit for all the accomplishments. It was a team effort of council. And the employees and together as a team, we accomplished a lot. I think you'll see that in the mayor's accomplishments over the last three years, but thank you all again, and yes, I will go to the um, the Bluebird next door, but thank you for mentioning the Friendly Stop as well, because that's also a favorite. And thank you all again. I look forward to the next two days of talking to you.
Thank you, Wally, and we will have more up. We have another one. Uh, Madam Clerk.
I didn't mean to like, you know, end the whole thing, but uh, Wally, thanks for all your counsel, as I've uh been in and out of doing the minutes. Uh, so your history has been uh very helpful, and uh thank you for not making me retype anybody's minutes previously that you said people could not read. Um, uh, in the, in all those books that you have, so I look forward to seeing you and Phyllis in the office soon. I mean, I have countdowns on both of you, because. You'll, you've made a big impression on us, and I hope we've made a big impression on you, and that you will stop by to visit.
Well, thank you all, and uh, we're gonna have another opportunity to uh do a proper uh, you know. Farewell uh to Wally and then also to uh Phyllis and to uh Chief Warman, and uh, we'll do it upright. So for now, unless there's something else on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Good job.
Good night.